Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, November fourteenth. And this, this actually may be the last Board of Selectmen meeting ever.
No, don't we have one on Thursday?
By then we'll be called the Select Board.
Oh, I see your point now.
Well, are we, why are we called that, or do we have to wait for the Attorney General to give their stamp of approval?
Well, details. I don't know. I guess it'd be the spirit that we're...
What town council thing?
So, why don't we, anyone have any announcements, other than tonight is town meeting, which is why our setting looks a little different and why we're having a meeting over dinner? Any, anyone have anything? I see none, and do I see any public comment? I see none. Okay, so why don't we get into our calendar and dig right in? First is the minutes for November seventh. Anyone have any, do we have a minute, are you taking minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you're taking minutes, awesome, okay. Any, any changes to the minutes?
Can we hold those? I didn't get a chance to...
Okay, we will hold the minutes for November seventh. Okay, and we have a number of temporary alcohol permits. So, I'll move that we grant four permits to serve alcoholic beverages on town property, non-sales all kinds for the Lars Anderson Auto Museum at fifteen Newton Street as follows: for a holiday party to be held on Wednesday, December sixth, from five thirty to eleven, and for a holiday party on Thursday, December seventh, from five to eleven; for an engagement party to be held on Saturday, December ninth, from six to eleven; and also for a holiday party to be held on Wednesday, December thirteenth, from six to eleven. I'll move that we grant temporary wine and malt alcoholic beverage sales license at Olive Connection for a cooking class to be held on Monday, December eleventh, from six to eight, at fourteen twenty-six Beacon Street. I'll also move that we accept, whoop, no, that's it. So, all those in fa, whoop, and the licenses, the package looks good?
The package looks good, and I note that the police department has reviewed all the materials and sees no reason to deny any of these temporary licenses.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving these temporary alcohol beverage licenses? All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Keller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Next item is a question of accepting a sustainable materials recovery grant for two hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars. Commissioner Papsturgen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is the grant that we promised you way back when we were studying our hybrid pay-as-you-throw collection system. It's HYDRA-PAT. The DPP has a grant available under the sustainable material recovery program, and it's based primarily on the reduction of solid waste to smaller cots. Cots about four, I'm not eligible for cots, I'm not eligible. Any dwelling, any single family dwelling that has received a thirty-five gallon container is eligible for the, for the grant offset. And it comes to about fifteen dollars per cot, so it's a sizable amount. They also extended it to the sixty-five gallon cot size if it's for two family or more. And we have some of those as well. And also the ninety-five gallon cot that just serves three families or more, which is the equivalent of thirty-five gallons per unit. So, basically, it's, it's based on the thirty-five gallon cot size per unit. We did purchase a total, I think after all the swaps were done, thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-nine cots, total of various sizes. Up to thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-nine, eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six were eligible for the grant, which is what makes up the two hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars. We've already received the check, checks in the treasury, and just need you to accept it now. And we'll put it out.
Okay. Any questions? How's, how's the program going?
I think the program's going very well. We've completed our fourth month. We, we're gonna, we're gonna get through the six, first six month period, and I'll be coming back to you with a, with a official progress report, letting you know what's been happening over the first six months of the program. But I did check the wording of, because I knew you were gonna ask that question.
Hey, you're a voice scout. You're a voice scout, let me ask you a question.
Right, as, in the first four months of the program, our solid waste, this is municipal solid waste tonnage, has reduced, has gone down nearly six percent.
Really?
In terms of tonnage, we've, we've reduced our tonnage for the same period, over the same period over last year by over two hundred less this four-month period than last year. At the same time, over the same period, our recycling tonnages have increased nearly five point two percent. So, the program is doing exactly what we, we expected it to do. Solid waste tonnage is going down, recycling is going up, and it continues to do that. So, complaints have, have pretty much subsided, I don't wanna jinx myself, but once we got through the initial period of the cots selection and went through all the swaps, we did have over a thousand accounts we forced swaps after the initial four-month period, so we had to honor those. We did complete our first amnesty collection, which was the last week in October. That yielded about thirty-five tons of additional trash in that one week period, in addition to the regular collection. So, that was fairly successful. It wasn't as well, the response wasn't as great as I had thought it would be. In terms of all the PR, we did have an amnesty collection, but nonetheless, we did collect thirty-five additional tons. So, I'll be giving you a complete update of the whole program, probably sometime you get a word.
Okay.
And then kind of give you a forecast a little ahead.
Nice question. How has the pink recycling bags helped or impacted your collection? Or have you been able to determine?
Oh, actually, the, the response to that has been, has been increasing, week by week. It started off slow. There were some glitches at the beginning, because the people that are doing the collection, this is all private collection, they, they mirror the roots of our sanitation collection rules and our recycling rules, but the drivers weren't well-versed in the, in the town, so there were a lot of missed stops, and of course, people would call in and, and could tell us about those. So, it was a little period of education for the guys doing the collection on the, on the textiles. Those have subsided, and the program is very good. When they collect a bag from you, probably they leave it, leave the bag in place for you to use again. And we've seen an uptick in the number of pink bags. Thankfully, the number of purple bags is kind of, kind of an uneven keel. It's very, it's been very low, our big purple overflow bags. We're not seeing a lot of overflow bags out there, which is good. We don't wanna see the overflow bags. So, I think, I'm, I'm being told by Simple Recycling, which is the company that runs that program, that, that more cities found and are coming onboard. We were one of the first communities to, to contract with them, and there are many more communities coming onboard now, seems to be the trend. And I would assume that it'll have an overall impact on increasing the amount of recyclables. We will account that for that amount of recyclables.
Are they making money?
I'm, I'm sure they make money. They wouldn't be doing it if they didn't. But we also get a return on it. We, we don't, we don't have any skin in the game, yet we do get a return, I believe, of twenty cents a ton, so we get back from them on the total tons that they collect. So, we get a little bit of revenue back. We do save, whatever, for every ton that we, that goes through that room, we're saving seventy-four dollars a ton for disposal costs, and we're also, you know, avoiding some of the recycling costs and costs that we do face.
Um, this grant, did we know about it when we were thinking about going towards pay-as-you-throw?
Yes.
Okay.
We geared up towards the thirty-five gallon cot, and we had anticipated it.
Excellent.
Okay, so, we should vote to accept, I'll move that we accept the sustainable materials recovery program municipal grant in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection in connection with the Hybrid Pay-as-you-throw Automated Trash Collection System. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Keller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. You're up again, Commissioner. This is filling a conservation assistant position.
Yes, a young lady who was a, our conservation assistant, went on maternity leave and has informed us that she won't be back, and we kind of expected that. She was very good, she was very good at what she did, provided a lot of support services for Tom Brady and the Conservation Commission, and also for Eric in the Parks and Open Space Division. We're kind of, you know, picking up the work on with them right now until we end their reassignment, but we're anxious to give this to our field as soon as possible. It's kind of a keep high of our administrative staff.
Okay.
I'll just comment that I had some interactions with her because of the Tree Protection Study Committee. She was the staff person who was assisting us, in addition to Tom Brady, and she was always very professional and, and good, and so I am happy for her that she's happy in her family situation, but sad for us that we've lost her.
That's one of those positions where we seem to have a pretty high turnover. We get great people in there, but they're so good that they move on, so it's kind of a double-edged sword.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? I'll move that we authorize the filling of the conservation assistant vacancy within the Parks and Open Space Division of the DPW. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Keller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Excuse me, and the chair votes aye.
What about me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
[laughing].
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I certainly hope we're only counting one of those chair votes.
Right. Double count. Okay, we have two library, library positions, librarian two, a cataloger, and a librarian three, a branch supervisor at Putterham. Ms. Slimon?
Hi, good evening. Sandra Slimon, I'm the library director. I have two positions that I would like to offer you to fill, please. I have the branch supervisor position at Putterham Branch. Putterham is currently the fifth busiest branch library in the entire state, but it's a tiny size.
Wow.
And it needs a strong supervisor. Our last supervisor was lovely and wonderful, but similar to what Mr. Popster does, had changed life circumstances and moved off to the place to be library director and on an enhancer order, so, you know, many blessings to her, but I need a, I need somebody to run that branch, so I would ask that you authorize me to hire that for that position.
Okay, and the cataloger also.
We'll do it together, sure.
Sure.
So, at Brooklyn Village, we have a technical services department, which is made up of five full-time employees and a supervisor, and there are only two trained catalogers on our staff to handle the close to three quarters of a million dollars worth of materials that we order every year. So, it's an essential position, and we would like to fill it as soon as as possible.
Okay. What library schools are there in this area?
Simmons College and the University of Rhode Island are the two closest.
So, you have a source for a big pool and diverse pool of applicants.
Yes. Actually, I just taught a little class on public libraries at Simmons College last Thursday, because successfully scared them all out.
Okay. I will move that we fill the following vacancies, you authorize the filling of the following vacancies, with the library department, librarian two, cataloger, and a librarian three, a branch supervisor at Putterham. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Keller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to warrant articles. I see the petitioner here for articles eighteen and nineteen, or nineteen, so why don't we do that one first? We are, we have a difference with the advisory committee, so the first question is, do we want to, do we have any, is there any appetite on the board to reconcile? I personally prefer ours. I'd rather be a select person than a select board member, but it's...
I feel the same way.
It's not the end of the world.
Nope.
The world will still go on. So, I'm not gonna move reconsideration on eighteen, unless somebody wants me to move.
I mean, frankly, I don't think it's a big deal.
Right, I don't either.
Maybe Alex is shocked.
Well, actually, I, I, I mean, I understand. I think that we, the liaison, the board liaison for the commission, Green, was present at our last meeting, so was the liaison from the school committee, and one of the commissioners asked, what are the members of the school committee called? And they said, school committee members. So, it, I understand that you have your feelings about you, what you want to be called. I certainly have my feelings about what I want to be called, so I appreciate that. But I would just say that it would be palatable in that respect. I did, in the version that the commission, basically Article nine, you went with the advisory committee recommendation, because the petitioner on eighteen, Michael Bursting, even though it was originally my language...
Makes no difference.
Believe me, I am, I'm learning things I don't ever wanna learn.
If you don't care who gets credit, you'll get a lot better.
No, I don't care, but, no, I don't care who gets credit. I get, what I care about is that it, the language in mine was a bit broader than the language in the original eighteen. And so, the, what the commission did was basically adopt the, and, and the petitioner on eighteen, Michael, wanted the advisory committee, and it would be a big morass if I then on nineteen said, no, I wanna go with the BOS, you know, that, that would create a problem. So, I, I'm not gonna go there.
Okay, so...
But what we did was, we basically did the advisory committee version with the last phrase of the BOS version, almost verbatim, only we made it into a complete sentence. And then, for some reason, the moderator said that on our version, it was beyond the scope, but I don't understand that.
And it's beyond the scope. Doesn't matter. It's irrelevant.
So, I, I'm just, that's all I have to say.
Okay. So, are you comfortable talking about the differences?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So, then the question was, is it okay for the moderator to assume that if, when eighteen passes, the same construction becomes nineteen? So, so if select person passes in eighteen, he can automatically assume select person is nineteen, it'll make his life a lot easier. Are we okay with that? I don't, I don't need to do a vote.
I think it's...
I'll just convey to the moderator that that's a sense of the board.
I appreciate that, because the moderator indicated that there was a possibility that we might not even have a nineteen if there was a disagreement, so...
Yeah.
We're mostly agreeable.
Yeah, so, so we'll see which version Town Meeting goes for, and whichever version the world will still turn.
Hey, moving forward.
We still have to call myself...
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I don't know, should we...
I can grab David if you want.
David?
Mark Goldstein if you want him to twenty-two.
Um, or why don't, yeah, okay, why don't you, yeah. So, it seems, Selectman Green, our options are, we go with advisory, or we go with the petitioner?
The question is, what is advisory? They have my original version, and then a subsequent version, where I tried to incorporate some of Marty's phraseology.
So, what I see, so, Mr. Goldstein, advisory's motion on twenty-two is on the green supplement?
I think the combined reports, I believe, I'm, I'm not sure which is, you amended it very slightly, if there's a supplement on twenty-two, that's P A Z level, then that's it, but whatever the latest version is.
So, was eleven just...
Bright pink.
Bright pink?
Yes.
Bright pink is the motion offered by the petitioners.
The petitioner, so then the, the motion of the advisory committee is what was in the original...
I think so. I think they fixed it before, I'm...
Green, sorry, yeah, the green, is the advisory committee's motion.
So, that was what I revised from Marty's original tone, with a couple fixes by you.
Right, and then the Select Committee made a little...
Why don't you, why don't you come up to the mic, so our vast TV audience can...
I'll have to find a place. This is your...
Um, so, we, we have actually three options. We can come out with no recommendation, we can go with the advisory committee recommendation, or we can go with the, with the petitioner's recommendation.
You know, it's unfortunate that the petitioner's not here, because last week, I think, a major omnibus crime bill was reported out of the Senate, and today, I think they're working on a House version, so, you know, we don't really know how relevant, you know, stuff is.
Neil Gordon?
Unfortunately, it was written originally, sort of assuming certain things that haven't necessarily come to pass.
Which one of these versions would leave us more up to date?
Um...
You know?
Well, I think the, the, the one that's in the packet would be more up to date, because it doesn't address some of the legislation that's in the other one.
So, we're talking about twenty-two, and the board, the board has a choice, because we, we didn't get anything written in time for Town Meeting, so we have a choice of going with the advisory motion that's in the packet, the green supplement. We can go with the petitioner's motion, or we can come out with outer recommendation, which wouldn't be the end of the world either. Um, that's, so, Selectman Green, do you have a preference?
This has been such a difficult, oh, sorry. This has been such a difficult process, with, you know, various versions of the Warren Article at various times that we're trying to make sense of. No action would mean that Town Meeting, basically, you can vote up or down, the petitioner's motion itself.
Right, we can, we can also, we have a fourth option, no action.
Yeah.
So, it's no action, petitioner's recommendation, the petitioner's motion, the advisory committee motion, or no recommendation. Those are our options. And whichever, you're gonna be the one speaking, right?
Right.
So, make it good.
It's gonna be good. It's gonna be fiery, it's gonna be interesting. But what, what do we do now? I mean, I guess the idea of no action sort of finesses, or, sort of, yeah, finesses the controversies that we have. What, what do you think?
Well, Neil Gordon in prison, one Town Meeting member and co-petitioner of Warren Article twenty-two. In the last, call it, for lack of a better term, discussion draft of Selectman Green, in the discussion with Marty Rosenthal, there were a number of remaining unresolved differences between the draft and the petitioner's motion, in his most, in the current version, as is in the combined reports. The draft is a lot closer than the advisory committee motion that was voted favorable action of what seems like a very long time ago now. That particular draft was not acceptable to the petitioners, and we continue to believe that we have the... For lack of a better term, I think we have to go backwards, if I presume that Selectman Green's draft might have been acceptable. To go all the way back to the advisory committee draft, which is a lesser solution than the one that was closer but still not available, doesn't seem practical to me.
Well, you know, the, the problem is, is that I tried to compromise with Marty, with that draft, that, you know, was very close. It had some phraseology that maybe some members of the advisory committee didn't, didn't like, but I think, you know, they would've come around if Marty was willing to compromise. He was not. He wants to have a grand debate on phraseology and, you know, whatever. You know, how, he thinks that we need to, what he calls, you know, be a strong advocate for a position in order to appeal to the activists, you know, et cetera. And, you know, the position that I take and that the advisory committee take is, let's be serious, okay? I mean, this is, we're, we're trying to present ourselves as serious commentators on this issue, and, you know, you know, polemics and sort of strident language is not really going to address either the activists who are serious, or the media, or the legislature that is, you know, a real ultimate audience. So, I mean, he doesn't wanna compromise, so I think, you know, no action probably is the, is the more appropriate, you know, appropriate standard.
Or no recommendation, just because...
For no recommendation.
We haven't really had the time to have a full, have a discussion and a debate about the two versions, so...
I'll, I'll say this, and I won't speak for Marty Rosenthal, who's not here, but would speak eloquently for himself. I think there is, there is no one in our particular sphere who's worked harder and is perhaps more knowledgeable, and in his opinion, which version represents the best tool for his purpose in moving this particular issue forward as an advocate. And if he's holding firm on what some might consider to be trivial, it's important to Marty, and I suggest it's important for a reason. That reason may be beyond my ability to defend it or explain it, because I'm not the advocate, and Marty Rosenthal is the advocate. If it's that close, on, on this important an issue, I'd be disappointed to see no action on the part of the Board of Select, if it's that close. And it is, as Selectman Green described it, a, you know, a debate on the floor of Town Meeting over an issue that matters less than the issue in principle. And I'd hate to lose the issue in principle over that particular matter. I, I find that to be disappointing and short-sighted.
Mr. Goldstein?
So, the issue in principle is being obscured by the hyperbole that's in there, and the use of the word, say, insidious, which takes attention away from the message. And what Bernard Green and I try to do is keep the message straightforward, and, you know, when, when you look at this, if you wanna be taken seriously, I don't think the press will take the message as seriously as it might, if there are all these hyperbole and just bad edits and, and syntax and all that in there. They're gonna take it more seriously, it becomes, you know, a... if it comes, you know, a mature version that puts it out in a calm, rational way. And I remind you all of this, Marty is not the one setting this out, and Neil's not the one setting this out, this is the petitioner's asking the Town of Brookline, the municipal government of the Town of Brookline, to send out a message, and there should be a certain responsibility from Selectmen and the advisory chair and town meeting to send out a calm, rational, mature message that doesn't go into hyperbole, doesn't go into insidious, and all these other things that distract from the message.
Speak of the devil. So we're debating your motion versus the advisory committee motion, or no action or no recommendation, that's, that's the state of affairs.
Tell them how I'm doing later, it doesn't have to be on the record.
Right.
May I ask, I'm sorry, couldn't find my keys, but is there a new motion, or is it the two?
No, there's no new motion.
Okay. Well, you want to know, we've said it, I mean, I think there's an accuracy in it as well as the rhetoric issues, so.
So.
My motion would be, I don't know, is it no action or no recommendation?
I'm comfortable with no recommendation, let town meeting, I don't think the Board of Selectmen has any special expertise in this area, so I.
You know, in light of, you know, developments on Beacon Hill the last few days, I mean, we're not really in a position to know, you know, what is effective and what, you know, we should, you know, be pushing for. And the other thing, you know, you're asking, I mean, you mentioned, you know, Marty has all the expertise, which, you know, everyone acknowledges, but he's asking for his way of articulating that to be spoken by us, and that's, you know, where I have the problem. I mean, it's not just town meeting, but he's asking the Board of Selectmen to say, you know, we, you know, this is our language, and I'm uncomfortable with that.
Well, may I just respond to that a little bit, I'm sorry.
A little bit, a little bit.
Bernard and I have stuck on two phrases, I don't know if he speaks that, but it was the best of the worst in terms of Massachusetts being better than other states, but, which is what the DA's like to say, and would like to compare us to other countries, Canada, every country. So that's number one, and the first one is in the first whereas, is addiction to incarceration. Bernard doesn't like it, I'm insisting on it, I think it describes what's happened, it's a term of art that's well-known in this field, and I think it is perfectly appropriate in the context of that first whereas clause, and I'm willing to debate anybody that says Bernard addicted to incarceration in this country for forty years. So, it's been a trend of doing more and more and more people in prison for no reason, that's an addiction.
But, you know, the other thing is, those are just the things that I objected to, the advisory committee objected to a lot of things that I included in my draft, so, I mean, it's not just me, and it's not just those two, you know, phrases that are at issue here.
Advisory committee motion has a lot of problems, not your latest draft, it's not undertaken, but federal reforms are going on, there are any things that mixes up the US and the state figures, I mean, I have looked at it for a while, but we described in the supplemental mailing some of the issues with it, so, you know.
Okay.
I don't mind if you take no position, I think.
Okay, then you can make your case to town meeting and.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
And I will articulate why we got to this standpoint.
Well, yeah, I'm happy you're debating why we're at this standpoint.
Not a debate, but just a statement.
Well, we differ, it's a friendly debate, we differ.
Okay, so the motion is for us to take no position.
Uh huh.
All those in favor, please say aye, Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
I'm probably going to abstain.
Okay, Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And it sure votes aye. Would you have preferred a different motion?
No, I, depending on the debate, I probably will go with Marty's, I think that.
Okay, that's fair.
That, so I don't want to indicate that I will not vote on the motion.
Okay.
Which is why I'm abstaining now.
I don't know how I'm going to go, so. So the only one left.
Two left.
I have two, oh, nine.
Nine and sixteen.
Is.
Fifteen then?
Fifteen, oh, it's sixteen.
Sixteen.
So, there's, there's, the petitioners have agreed to a motion which is a referral to the selectmen with a report by the next town meeting, is that it?
Basically, we replace the advisory committee motion, but replacing two committees appointed by the moderator, simply to say two of the stuff.
Right.
So that's the same motion, and the moderator said that would be.
Sixteen.
Close enough to go before.
And, can I just add, that is not to a selectmen's committee.
Correct. That's me working with staff.
It's consciously chosen, I'm not trying to form a new committee, and I'm not volunteering to be on it.
Oh, you're not volunteering us, thank you.
Okay, so we're taking the advisory motion, which is in the orange supplement on page eight.
So sixteen, eight?
Sixteen, supplement one, page eight, substituting selectmen for committee CTO S.
Well, I think their motion was to a committee appointed by the moderator, I don't have an objection to that, that wasn't said before, but it's to the selectmen, which is.
Right, to the selectmen, well, the language I see here is to the, to CTO S.
Oh, well.
So, to the selectmen.
Well, yeah, in any event, whatever.
Right, the administration.
Oh, yeah, you're right, the advisory committee was, it was the CTO S motion was, instead of that, a committee appointed by the moderator, which could have been CTO S.
Right.
But the advisory committee did CTO S.
And Mr. Kleckner and Ms. Goff are okay with this, so I'm going to move the advisory committee motion with the substitution for the selectmen, it's going to come to us. All those in favor, please say aye, Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
I should know by now. Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And it sure votes aye. Okay.
Thank you, sorry I'm late again.
Neil, if Joe Feingold or Judy Lightner or Nathan Spritzer across the hall, send them over. Thirteen, what's the?
So you need to reconsider.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, there was an issue with thirteen, there was a technical flaw, there was no exhibit attached in the original warrant, so the warrant article is invalid, but it turns out it was superfluous, was redundant, because the thirteen required a deed restriction be filed, it's a requirement of the development agreement, and, so, we're good, so, it has, in substance, it has no effect, it's just not as clean as we would have liked otherwise. So I will move reconsideration of Article thirteen, all those in favor, please say aye, Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
Sure votes aye, and I'll move no action recommendation on thirteen, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
Okay, sure votes aye, okay. Article nine, so, Mr. Feingold, do we have Mr. Feingold's?
It's in the supplement, it's a trouble.
It's in our packet.
Yeah, it's in there.
It was in our packet over the weekend?
No, it's in the, you're holding it in.
It's in my hand.
Is it different from what was in our packet? Is it different from what was in our packet?
Yeah, it's new, so it's getting the book that we're preparing for you.
So the difference, Mr. Feingold, quickly?
Yes, very briefly, of course, my apologies, I was a typist, then there's a typo.
Mr. Feingold, you got to step up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
So our vast TV audience can hear you.
We're all famous, was it Andy Warhol, so, I was a typist, then there's a typo, right off the bat, where it says, "An act authorizing the Town of Brookline to grant," it says thirty-five, that should be thirty, and to be drunk, and then five additional licenses, so it should be thirty and five, instead of thirty-five and five, my apologies. The key differences between the amendment and the original are limited to the number of licenses and where they'll be. It tracks the rest of the language exactly, and as I've stated before, I'm very much in favor of one of these two, either nine or nine as amended, being passed for many reasons. So, the differences that you'll see are in two, of two different types. Some of the licenses being proposed would be for specific areas, which were represented in maps number one through five in the original article, and then some licenses were for, let's call them flexible, and could be applied to any location within broad areas as defined in the other maps. So, I had received comments from some neighborhoods of concern about the increases in their licenses, and those are reflected in the map of Route nine on Chestnut Hill, which was originally set for a proposed increase of five licenses, and I reduced that area to three licenses. And then, the other area that was proposed for increased licenses of four additional licenses was 1200 Beacon Street or the Holiday Inn, and the Save Our Beacon Street Neighborhood Association adamantly opposed to a substantial increase in commercial activity there, but if that property is well-redeveloped, and there's another hotel, it's reasonable for them to want at least a second license for a leased-out restaurant. So I reduced the four additional licenses to one in that location. And then the other differences are in the maps six A, B, and C, now labeled as six A, B, and C amend. Those maps had broad areas for new flexible licenses defined on the town's 2016 housing development plan, which I thought was too expansive because it encompassed so many residential neighborhoods. So what I did is I curated a more limited area, which I called commercial opportunity areas, which, and I admit it's an opinion of one, but I took quite a bit of time, and I looked carefully at the areas, and I shrunk the development opportunity areas into these commercial opportunity areas. So, that was how the flexible licenses now can still be applied, but, you know, on streets and in commercial neighborhoods, as opposed to in more specifically residential areas.
Okay, Selectman Franco?
So, I appreciate Mr. Feingold's work on this, I am opposed to the amendment for two general reasons and then one very specific reason. As I wrote to the TMMA over the weekend, I think, excuse me, I think first, this is, in essence, an negotiating, an open negotiating position to the legislature, and I think by decreasing the number of licenses we request overall, and by being more specific about the locations in which they could be used in the second bucket, the, in Mr. Feingold's language, the commercial opportunity areas, we're not advantaging ourselves in that negotiation with the legislature. Second, I think by, again, limiting the areas in which licenses could be issued, we are deviating from the spirit in which this article was originally drafted, that to take a long-term vision, ten, twenty, thirty years into the future, and doing a much more short-term vision based on the community, the town as it exists today. And then, to the more specific concern I have, if you direct your attention to the corner of Paddle Street and Beacon Street, that's the area around the Holiday Inn, those areas, which are currently commercial areas, have been removed from the map six, meaning that if there is a need in the future to go beyond the two licenses that Mr. Feingold has allotted to the Holiday Inn, or if there's a redevelopment of what is currently a medical office building at the corner of Paddle and Beacon Street, there would be no licenses available under this request to those properties. We couldn't issue a third license out of this pot to the Holiday Inn, nor could we issue one of the non-site-specific licenses to that current medical office building, and I think, again, that's a, taking a short-term approach to what we acknowledge is a long-term problem.
Okay, we don't have a lot of time, so, is there any desire on the Board to reconsider? I'm inclined to just stick with what we got, it's an opening kind of negotiation, I appreciate the effort you made, I think, there's never been, and I don't think there ever will be a liquor license issued in a residential neighborhood, you know, this Board would have to do that.
We'd have to change the zoning first, it's impossible.
Right, yeah, right. So, I see no motion, so.
Okay.
Make your case.
Thank you very much, yep.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Let's, so the last thing up is the replacement to what was Article, I guess fifteen, is now STM two, Article one. So, Ms. Lightner and Mr. Spritz have an amendment, come so our vast TV audience. So this is special town meeting two, it's the replacement to Article fifteen. So this, this is an alternate construct of the NCD should the Hancock Village warrant articles pass, so.
Hi, I'm Judy Lightner, town meeting member from pre-sixteen sixteen. As you probably all recall, the memorandum of agreement that was signed by all parties called for a possible amendment to the NCD that we all voted in to town meeting six years ago with an eighty percent approval. Subsequent to that, the Article fifteen appeared, which called for the elimination of the NCD, and since that was not what the MOA had called for, a lot of people had some real concerns about that. And then this article came up. Unfortunately, this article basically eliminates the NCD because it takes away all of the oversight of the historic property that the NCD Commission has had. I just wanted to, so our amendment allows for the H, the new overlay zoning and all of the buildings to be built, and with everything that's in Article ten, but then it means that the NCD could keep control over the rest of the property. It's similar to what would happen if they had built a forty B property, a forty B project, everything else would be covered. So, this says they can do what they need to do, so if Article ten passes, they can do all of that, but at the end, but they don't, but the NCD has some, some control over the rest of the property, because this actually says they can't look at anything unless it's more than an acre and a quarter, or you could take an acre and a quarter, and an acre and a quarter, and acre and a quarter, and basically decimate the property, and the NCD could do nothing about it. So, I just also wanted to mention, the NCD has not been an impediment to Chestnut Hill Realty. In fact, the NCD Commission asked to work with them, sent them a letter right after they were formed, and Chestnut Hill Realty never responded, in fact, the only time they ever came in front of. In fact, the only time they ever came in front of the NCD Commission was this past summer where they asked, could they please start this project early by putting roads and parking into the green belt? And they wanted to do that before anything ever got passed. The NCD Commission was not looking at that favorably and eventually Chestnut Hill Realty did not continue with that request. The only other time we've heard this story about how it was because of the NCD Commission that Chestnut Hill Realty could not remove a tree. And as many of you up there know, it's only because they had just come, asked to do roads and parking early and when people saw that there was a tree being moved, people were somewhat suspicious and actually someone called Selectman Woschinski and the building commissioner said, you better stop. But the NCD Commission has not only been willing to work with Hancock, with Chestnut Hill Realty and would like to work with them and as of last Thursday at the meeting of that mission, they actually repeated again, they'd be more than happy to work with them. So I don't see them as an impediment to anything. And so we feel that it would be in the best interest of the neighborhood and in terms of what the town meeting voted six years ago, to make this change and allow them to have oversight just over the part that is not part of the new project if that should be voted through at town meeting tomorrow night.
Right, so...
And I think Neil wants, Nathan wants to add one thing.
Yeah, just a couple of more things. Hancock Village is about fifty acres big. The threshold for jurisdiction for the NCD now is two and a half percent, which means that it's two and a half percent of about one percent, a little bit more than one percent of the entire land area of Brookline. That's a pretty big threshold that you would have to overcome. And in addition, Neil sent out an email to everybody today indicating that there might be some sale, some planned sale of some part of this project or that looks something like that, that there could be some change in ownership at some point in the future, not planned, not planned immediately. And Hancock Village interacts directly with budding neighbors and the NCD protects that interaction. And after, if there is ever a sale, two or three or multiple owners might treat some of the landscaping or some of the, some of the ongoing maintenance of the property differently. And just keeping the NCD's jurisdiction intact would help to maintain the entire cohesion of that part of the neighborhood, which is part of our neighborhood in Precinct sixteen and in what we think is still a fairly lightheaded regulatory framework. That's all we would like you to consider, so thank you.
So the problem with this is the way the MOU was constructed and then the development agreement was constructed. If Chestnut Hill needs to agree with all, you know, changes to the zoning and the, you know, any of the warrant articles that affect the package. So if this pass, if the zoning passes and then this passes, we could have the, what I've been kind of calling the potential nightmare scenario where they would get the zoning, yet they can null, they can then nullify the development agreement. And the development agreement is where all the goodies are. So they could then do all the building and not give us the goodies theoretically. So I don't think I can support it for that reason. Sounds like a good idea, but there is that technical issue.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The NCD, who appoints the members? How big is it?
We appoint the members.
We do?
For the Selectmen.
Okay. How big is it?
Seven-ish.
I think if it's seven or nine, if it's seven, nine.
Seven or nine, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also was pleased to hear that Chestnut Hill Realty did sign the development.
Yes, they signed the development.
Yes, otherwise the nightmare scenario could have occurred well before this.
Right, right.
So could you explain again, you know, how that nightmare scenario was triggered?
So there's a provision in the development agreement that, remember, this is a part of a legal settlement.
All right.
So...
I mean, I don't remember at any rate.
So it's, so we have kind of a confluence of the legal settlement with the political process. So the development agreement says that town meet, it's valid if town meeting passes the warrant articles as, without material changes to the, to the warrant as of September and if there are changes, they need to, all parties, the town and Chestnut Hill need to agree in writing.
Okay, so it's...
So they have agreed in writing to everything except, and we have a, we have a certification of everything except that one.
So this would blow the development agreement out of order?
This would blow the deal up. So the...
Unless Chestnut Hill agreed.
Excuse me?
Unless Chestnut Hill agreed.
Correct. I can assure you with this one, they won't. Having been in the room with them. So we had voted no action. Is there an appetite to reconsider? I don't see.
Well, if we're going to lose the things that we've been fighting to get out of this agreement, then it would not be in our interest to vote for it because we wouldn't get the things that we really wanted.
Right.
So.
There's no PA.
All I can say is it's a shame that it was designed this way that, that it didn't include a three-party, because there were three parties originally to agree together. It seems like one party ended up being in control, which is, which is a shame, I think, for not only the neighborhood but for the whole town in terms of how we negotiate things. That's my aside.
Okay. So I, so we're not going to reconsider, so I think we're done for the evening.
Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Thank you.